Okay, we're gonna open tonight with a public hearing. The purpose of tonight's public hearing is to allow for public comment on the submission of an application for a community development block grant for the 2021 year. We talked about this in previous meetings Delaware Engineering will be completing the grant for us. The Community Development Block Grant is administered by the New York State Office of Community Renewal. It's actually funded by federally through HUD. In New York, it makes available to local governments approximately 49 million this year. For housing economic development, public facilities, public infrastructure and planning activities. Our plan for this is for a $50,000 grant for the trying to use the right words here that we use, but it's to do a, an assessment and evaluation on the condition of our public water and sewer underground systems, looking at the I and I. Evaluating those systems that, you know, we've spent a lot of time looking at, this will be a thorough evaluation of them so that we can establish a plan to go after them long-term and hopefully to go after future funding based on that plan. Any comments on the Community Development Block Grant applications? Does anyone have any comments on the Community Development Block Grant application? No, okay. The only thing I left off is it is a 5% match. Die from math in public, but I believe that's $2,500 for a $50,000 grant. All right, if there are no comments, I will close the public comment portion in the public hearing. And we will get on with regular business of our department head meeting. We'll start with Tal. There you are.
Hello, everybody. So, still pretty quiet on my side, just working on a couple of things. First, I think I said this before, the title report is in for the DPW building and there really aren't any issues other than there was a small, I guess typo in the email, I'm sorry, in the deed that conveyed out the property to our current, to our purchaser. And so she's kind of actually buying her own house back along with this because her house is still part of our parcel.
Technically, it's convenient that somebody else didn't buy it then.
Well, I mean, it's really, it's just a technical issue. It's not real ownership, but it's just kind of a funny thing where there was a the deed missed a couple of things that should have had it in there.
Okay.
We'll clean that up at the closing at the end of the month. Also been working with the mayor on finding ways for, whether it's street rentals or franchise or whatever, and we've got a couple of other avenues that we'd like to explore, and I think we've got a pretty good one, maybe using the city of Hudson as a model. And so we'll work on that.
Just so I can give a little background on that, since we haven't talked about it in the past. Kenny from Crossroads approached me about, you know, wanting to be able to use that street space more. So I think, you know, I think this year it's easy and what Hudson did is an emergency, essentially an emergency proclamation for like, for lack of a better word, where you can get permitting to do the way we did it last year based on COVID. I think he's looking for more of a long-term use.
Okay.
So I asked Tal to see if we could spell out what that might look like, what, you know, what it would cost, how we would go about doing it, what limitations would be involved, all that kind of thing. So early, early thought, just to see if there's any feasibility. So we're looking at various ways that we can do it. I think it's easy this year to do. And then the question is, would we, would we be able to find a longer-term way to do that for?
And now that we've discovered this, the short-term way that works better, I think than a lease or a franchise, we might just be able to roll future authority into a local law. So I want to see if that's just something that we can do. And if it is, then I think that's the easiest way to go straight to it to authorize us to do it. Then the last thing is working on some of the updates for our zoning law to take into account the waterfront information that we have from the comp plan. So my goal is to have that draft to you at our next meeting so that you can all review it and set it for a public hearing and get that adopted because I think the full board wants to have something like this on, on the books sooner rather than later.
Yeah, we'll talk a little bit, maybe probably at the end about where we stand with naming an implementation committee. I know Amy and Rob have done some work on that this week. We don't have names yet. But we'll talk a little bit about where we are. That said, I want to make sure that we're very clear on getting done some of the waterfront items that are in that prior to expiration of the moratorium and/or so that we can remove the moratorium. So I think there's, that's where I see the biggest impetus to get some of that done is relative to the mixed-use waterfront moratorium that we have in place. So I wanted to make sure that we move forward on that. Okay, sorry, was that it, Tal?
That's it, and that's all I've got.
All right, from the board, any questions from Tal, for Tal?
I have one question for the zoning law. Will that require the zoning board to be convened?
No, I mean, we can, we can certainly ask the ZBA and the planning board for comment. Probably not, no.
Thanks.
All right, any other questions for Tal?
Stefan, you mind if I pop off? I've got to run to Jewett, but I should be back hopefully in about half an hour or so.
Yeah, I think so long as we have you by the end, I think we're good.
Okay. All right, I'll be back.
Thank you. I saw Anthony, didn't I? There you go, Anthony.
Okay, there you go.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I don't have much, the, just that the building is coming to, just about being done. They hooked up the toilets and everything yesterday. They just got a few more things to do in there, which I talked to Jason today. He made out a punch list for everybody to say, you know, what he saw was wrong that he wanted fixed. So he said they should be all done by the end of the month.
Great, I saw that. And we'll talk about the paperwork that he sent to everybody. I spoke to him about that earlier.
Okay.
Just, just so everyone's aware, during the big snowstorm this weekend, we had a water main break just to complicate things. Ricky, thank you for stepping up and helping. It turns out village trustees are part of the insurance, so Ricky was able to go help. But, boy, what a, the fact that everyone woke up with streets plowed and everything back to normal the next day, you guys, you guys, we should buy you a new building.
Thank you. Can't wait to get in. The only other thing I have is the leak detection guy that we contacted him, he will be here tomorrow.
Okay, great.
And I believe he's going to get it all done in one day, so it probably should only be around $1,500 for him to do what he has to do.
Okay.
And the last thing I have is, when do you think we can start advertising for help? For the village, for a new employee?
I thought we had left it that we weren't going to go out for a new employee.
For till, till springtime.
All right, let's, let's get together and chat about it, make sure it's in the budget, and then we can talk about it because we, we use that portion of the budget this year, right?
Yeah, that was put towards the pickup truck.
Yeah.
But, I think, what, if I'm not mistaken, Anthony, you're thinking more like the beginning of the fiscal year?
Yeah, yeah. Seems that we only have one truck that requires a CDL license. You think we could waive that now? Because we have three guys with CDL licenses and you're only going to have, you know, you got one truck. And I think you would get more people to apply.
Yeah, I don't, so Wayne, didn't we, or didn't we structure the new pay plan, wasn't, wasn't CDL part of how we structured that?
Yeah, it was.
I think based on the way we structured the pay, we could certainly go out and advertise without a CDL for initial employment, so long as, you know, the union contract allows it. So I'll give you, I think yes, but we need to just verify that's not going to get me in trouble with a union contract or anything else.
Yeah, I'm just throwing it out there, see if we could go that way, see if we get some, you know, different people to, to apply. I think that, I think the CDL license stops a lot of people from applying.
Okay, first thing we gotta do is get it in the budget for next year, and then we can talk about getting it advertised.
All right.
Good.
That's all I got.
Anything for Anthony from the board?
I have one question. Do we have any, what are they called, U-channel signposts that we already own?
Yes.
Okay, two, can I get my hands on two of those for the park?
Any as you want.
All right, thanks. That's all I have.
So, just, I had called Anthony earlier. We had the issue brought up by a local resident via email about plowing behind their house. That's been cleared up. We just need to sort out the garbage can piece, but Anthony spoke to that individual and that, that plowing will be cleared up in the future. And we'll sort out the garbage can piece. I had sent, I sent some emails, so we'll see where we can get with that. I just got that today. All right, nothing else for Anthony?
With the trash cans, can, can we just have the village guys take those extra ones away?
Who's trash cans are they?
I have no idea.
So I need to sort out, are they on, are they somebody else's property? Are they on, physically on her property? Are they on the neighbor's property? I don't know. I haven't, I just got it this evening and I haven't had a chance to look at it.
There's no names on the cans?
Property overlapping just a part of mine.
There's no names on the cans?
County Waste? When somebody, they taped them all up a couple of weeks ago, and then they took a third one and stuck it on the top of it. And then we have two other companies there that I don't know whose cans they are.
If, if you want, we could take them out of there and put them somewhere for now until we can find out, you know, whose they are. We could call County Waste and find out.
That'd be great.
All right, I'll pick, I'll pick them up tomorrow morning and I'll, I'll put them down to the sewer plant underneath the carport there. Then we'll call County Waste to see if they belong to them. If they do, they can come and give them.
Thank you, Anthony. That's nice. I appreciate it.
32nd Street on, those are Rogers. And he was already thinking about moving them back over on the other side.
All right, I'll call Roger too.
Thank you, Anthony. Wayne, fire chief.
So, I only got, I got the phone call today, the, all the gear is in. So there, we're looking at, I'm trying to set up an arrangement with everybody that's getting them to come all in one day, because I guess Garrison wants to do a little photo op. And then, yeah, I'm trying, I'm shooting for this weekend. But we'll see, I gotta see, you know, what everybody's schedule is. And the only other thing is, is a call, so we only ran six calls this month and averaged about 10 to 15 now members showed up. That's about it.
All right, questions for Wayne? Police?
Roger on? I don't know, I got, did everybody get the report?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. They're going to put the speed detector back up when the weather's a little bit better from the get-to-the pole, so that should be shortly. And there's a bulletproof vest program, excuse my dog. Bulletproof vest program. All the officers have been measured for new vests and will be reimbursed fully by New York State.
Okay. Anything for Gail? All right, so I heard from code enforcement today, Ed's working nights and Jeff is deployed currently. They're working the backlog for certificates of occupancy requests for closing. They're halfway through, they're having to reorganize all the filings, so they've been spending a lot of time on that. Jeff, when he, Jeff comes home on the weekends and works that. So they're halfway through 1,250 files for the village. Every, every property in the village gets a file and they're getting all that completed. They've done three framing inspections this week. And Jeff has been working with the planning board for building permits in the historic district and issued three building permits this week. So I'll get more details on that and they will start attending meetings here in the future. Good. And we have Seth or Joe, there's Seth, Seth, North Dome?
You're muted, Seth.
Sorry about that. Good evening, everybody. Um, y'all have, did you all receive a copy of the report for the month?
Yes.
Water plant flows are running about 319,000 gallons a day going into distribution. No alarm calls for the month, which is a good thing, but the flows are certainly up. I'll get to that, a little bit more on that in a minute. The cellular alarm dialer has been ordered. After talking to the reps some more, the $299 to $300 a year subscription fee includes the cell service. So there'll be no, so there'll be no additional cost for a cell line. And that first, or the first year, that $300 that $300 charge is included in the cost of the equipment and the installation. So there's actually no charge for the first year.
Okay, good.
Well, that worked out well. Moving on to the village plant, we again are going to be out of compliance for flow this month. Came in about 16,000 gallons a day over the 400,000 permitted. Didn't have a lot of rain. Less than an inch and a half. So it's, it's coming from somewhere, so I'm assuming it's, it's, and it's an assumption on my part, but I'm assuming that we've got a leak out there somewhere that's finding its way into the, into the, into the collection system for the wastewater.
The main breaks as well, right?
Yeah, the main breaks. Depending, those don't normally, those normally wouldn't get into the collection system unless there is some, you know, some breach close to one of those breaks. I talked to Wayne and Anthony about the, the ones we had up on Third Street, and that line's been, that collection line had been lined. So I doubt it's getting in there. Interestingly enough, I mean, the first part of the month, we had about 10 days from the first through the 10th. We, we were over 400,000 gallons per day with less than a half an inch of rain, but that could have been residual from the heavy rain and snow melt from Christmas.
Yeah.
We then dropped below 400,000 for about four or five days, and then it went back up after a half an inch rain. And we were over 400,000 a day for another three or four days after that, and then it dropped off. Not by much, but under 400,000. So hopefully the leak detection guys will find something and that'll explain it.
Okay, have we started to compile data for Delaware for the CDBG?
The CDBG?
The block grant we talked about. We need to compile data for them, and this is all pertinent information for them.
We have got flow data for water and wastewater starting on, in January 2018 through January 2021.
Okay.
And it's, there's a big difference between 18, 19, and now. So, yeah, but we've got all that data and we've got it on a spreadsheet. Amy, I think you have copies of that?
Yeah, it's, Joe sent it to me. I'll forward it to everyone.
Okay, and I've got updated copies as well, because I'm keeping it updated on a monthly basis as we move forward. We were over 400,000 gallons a day for 14 days of the month.
So where are we at overall on, over just for the month? Are we at risk this year?
Not this year. Well, you know, things, if we don't get a lot of rain in February, right now, we're, we're under 400,000 gallons a day, every day, for the month of February.
Okay.
We've had in 2020, we had one, two, three, four non-compliance reports for flow exceedance. And then we have one so far this year.
That's on a rolling average though, right? It's not a, not a calendar year average, right?
Yes, it's a monthly average.
Yeah.
It's based on monthly. And there's a formula that they use, there's so many non-compliance reports for a specific parameter so often within so many, so many months before it triggers a DCE investigation. Our DCE rep is aware of this. I have talked to her about it during her inspections. So she knows what's going on. She also knows that, that you guys are being proactive. So we'll see where that goes.
Can she do a write-up for us for the block grant?
Generally, they don't get involved in that kind of thing as a regulator. But I certainly can ask. It never hurts to ask.
Doesn't hurt. We've got Senator Hinchey's going to do a write-up for us.
Oh, well, you know, that, I'll, I'll give her a call, I'll give her a call tomorrow, see what she says.
Okay.
All right. And let's see, Brick Row, 8,000 gallons a day, which is a little higher than normal, but again, this month it seems to be dropping off. And there were no days that we exceeded the permitted flow, so. Brick Row is holding his on. And that's all I got.
Okay, any questions for Seth?
No, I just sent you guys all that spreadsheet that Joe had sent me. Some of you were on it again originally, but you're getting it again, so.
This that we'll look at is from the New York, what is it, Health Department, that we met all of our reporting requirements for 2020, so we've got no outstanding reporting, so thank you guys for staying on top of that.
Problem.
All right, let's move on to resolutions. Any questions or concerns over the minutes as submitted? This is for January 27th minute meeting. Sorry, did somebody have something?
No, but just say goodnight.
Oh, goodnight, Seth. Thank you.
Were there any questions or concerns over the minutes?
No.
Nope. Anyone like to offer the resolution to approve the minutes from the January 27th board meeting?
I'll offer it.
Ricky?
I'll second.
Gail? All in favor? Opposed? So carries? Any questions or concerns over vouchers?
No.
Would anyone like to make a motion to approve payment of vouchers as presented?
I will.
I'll second it.
Rob? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries. I sent an email to everyone earlier today. We had been involved, we've talked about it a number of times, we've been involved as an interested party in both the Hecate and Flint Mine solar projects. Are, as far as I was concerned, and as far as we submitted, our only interest in those solar projects was the potential impact of the combined runoff of the two projects together and the impact they may have on the Sleepy Hollow Dam, which is a high-risk dam. We got feedback from the engineering firms that represent the solar projects. We got, we've had engineering reports from the engineers that represent Sleepy Hollow. And then you saw in that email, the report from the engineer that we had retained through the law firm that we retained as an interested party, all of which state there is no additional risk of runoff. As a matter of fact, if they follow the rules, it'll be overall reduced runoff. So there's no expected impact to the Sleepy Hollow Dam based on that. So based on that feedback, my recommendation is that we withdraw. We didn't actually, because of all those engineering firms, we didn't get put into the direct testimony. So I see no further reason to continue to pay for the engineering and legal fees associated. Any questions on that or concerns on it?
No.
Okay, so I'll read the resolution here, be resolved that the village board authorizes, oh, wrong one, sorry. Whereas the engineering assessments have concluded the runoff of combined Hecate and Flint Mine solar projects will not affect the Sleepy Hollow Dam and therefore not affect the Village of Athens. Therefore be resolved that the village board approved withdrawing their status as an interested party with the New York State Board of Electrical Generation citing and the environment for Hecate Energy and Flint Mine Solar Projects. Would anyone like to offer that motion? That resolution? And Rob? All in favor? Opposed? Unanimous. And, okay, well, Dawn, we sent all of our billing so far should be sent through the town of Athens. They're the intervenor funding point of contact. So MJ should have the emails on that. We, we don't, we didn't go over the intervenor funding, so it won't have cost the village anything to have thrown our hat into that, but no reason to continue at this point. Okay, so I think we have kind of an abbreviated version of the adoption of the block grant funding. There is a longer resolution. If it's okay with you guys, I'm just going to read the short version rather than read the page and a half version.
The long version is on the website if you, if anybody wants to read the whole thing.
Any objections to that?
No.
Be resolved that the village board authorizes the mayor to submit an application to the Office of Community Renewal CDBG Planning Program for a maximum of $50,000, which requires a 5% match and shall leave a copy of the application materials in the village hall for inspections by village residents. Questions or concerns over that? Would anyone like to offer a motion?
I will.
Amy?
I'll second it.
Ricky? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carries. Now, some of the correspondents, Dome, we only got the first, first page of every correspondent. So some I can't speak all that intelligently to today. If we could get that resent tomorrow with, with all of the pages, some of them, it really doesn't give us much information. So I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them. The first is a census form for essentially information on the municipal government. I assume that's something that you guys do, Dawn? You still with me, Dawn?
She's muted.
Frantically struggling to get off mute?
Dawn, you're muted.
There we go.
I've been giving code enforcement all of the Census Bureau stuff because it comes addressed to them, but I'll check on this one.
Yeah, this looked more like you guys than code enforcement. It's accurate boundaries, legal name, status information for the government. That, the way I read that, it sounded more like you guys than code enforcement. So take a look at that for me if you would.
All right. Yep.
All right, um, Electric Transmission Distribution Center, this is a compliance report for stray voltage required for electrical safety standard. Again, we're missing some of this, so I'm not exactly sure where it's going. So we'll, we'll get all these resent tomorrow with the full attachments. Champlain Hudson Certificate of Environmental Compatibility and Public Need. We talked about this. The CHPE power line runs across the river, crosses over by Catskill. It does not run through the village or town of Athens. Then we've got a couple here. This is a Hecate environmental compatibility and need pursuant to Article 10, establishing more public hearings. So I'm going to move quickly through these, so if anyone has a question. Next one, I'm not sure, the first page is only a title page. It's a CHPE application for environmental compatibility and public need, but I don't have any more information on that until we get the rest of it. environmental compatibility and public need, uh, but I don't have any more information on that until we get the rest of it. Um, the next one. Anthony, where does the, there is a single natural gas line essentially. Does it run down Union or is it down, yeah, down Union?
It goes right down from, uh, down scary turnpike, right down to Union, right down to Peckham's.
Okay. And it doesn't have a lot of, it doesn't have any sort of ancillary branches or anything coming off of it? Single straight line?
Uh, there's a few houses up there to have it.
Are there? Okay.
Well, they also teed it off like on Burning Street. I think they went down, what, four feet and stopped? And I think, I believe over on Constant Court, they did the same thing, only went so far down the road and stopped.
It may be worth just putting this out on the community board. It's just all this correspondence is, is who to call if you're gonna dig. We should let people know where these lines are, that natural gas lines do exist in the village, uh, and then put this out. It's, it's a, a good thing to remind people every, every year or so.
You're supposed to call 811 before you dig.
That's what this, that's basically what this says.
Yeah, they're supposed to call before they dig and then they come out and mark it out.
Yep.
I can put this notice, um, on our website and then put up a link and remind people to be careful.
Thank you.
Only 811. I'm still mad that they didn't run gas through the whole village, but talk about that later.
Noted. Okay, Flint Mine LLC Certificate of Environmental Compatibility, second ruling is the next one. Flint Mine Certificate of Environmental, uh, Environmental Camp Compatibility and Public Need, uh, another public hearing set, uh, this one for February 23rd at 10:30 a.m. Uh, the next one is the Department of Health issuance that all 2020 sampling has been completed, uh, for our water and sewer systems. So again, thank you to Seth in North Dome for keeping on top of that. And finally is an email from the engineer who's managing the D P W building. Um, and I spoke to him about this. So this is certificates of completion for each of the contractors. Uh, he went through and did a punch list with them today. Um, I'm not sure what's on that. I don't know if you were out there, Rob, or have any visibility on that, but now each of those contractors, as they believe they are completing their scope of work, need to submit, uh, a couple of forms to us, which he provided us. That's done by them. So we have no, uh, work that we need to do with it initially. We'll receive all of those, he believes, next week. Uh, and then we can make our final payments out to, uh, these contractors. Okay. I don't know if Rob or Anthony, if you know what was on that punch list, anything serious or significant or?
I, I didn't. I think it was an out, wasn't there issue with an outlet or something, Anthony?
Yeah, they, they corrected that. It's mostly like around the doors. They gotta frame out around the door. Some of the doors aren't the door frame. When you shut the door, the door hits the door frame a little bit. Just little stupid stuff they gotta take care of.
All right, good. And my compliments to the interior decorators. I like the color choices.
Thanks.
All right. New business. Uh, Dawn, hopefully you can help me with this one. Update age senior citizens and person with disabilities, limited income tax exemption limits?
Um, the assessor's office came over today and said that we had to set some kind of guideline. Yeah, I don't, did you get the email or did you get a letter on it at all?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Every year, um, every year the county sets a new, a new level of, you know, for the sliding scale for seniors and low income, um, for their exemptions. And it, it always raises it just maybe a hundred, 200 bucks, um, income so that those folks don't, that are right on the edge, don't fall out of getting the exemption. Um, and so they always ask that we do a resolution that matches what the county has done. Um, I, I don't know what those levels are, but it's, for the last 20 years, like, cause it's been, you know, a hundred or 200 bucks a year or so. So we have.
We need to get something on the next meeting to pass a resolution?
We have to do it by March 1st because that's tax status day.
Okay. Remember last year they sent, they sent us something that told us what, what it was gonna be. So.
Yeah, we should have had that.
Yeah.
Dawn, can you find that and make sure you get it out and then we get it on the, uh, it doesn't require any kind of public hearing or anything?
No.
Okay. So just make sure we've got the resolution on the agenda for next, uh, next meeting, please.
Okay.
Yeah. Gail, you wanna talk about the electric charging stations?
Sure. Uh, Josh and I had a Zoom call with Ron Sem. Um, and we can get an, an incentive from Central Hudson and, um, a rebate from NYSERDA, which would bring the cost way down. So we have that $10,000 grant. And with the cost, we can get a second dual port charging station if that is okay. And I think it's like a thousand dollars more than what the grant is, um, to do that.
So you'd want the village to fund the extra $1,000?
Yeah.
Okay.
Have to, we would have to have that. Then the other thing, uh, you can either rent them or buy them. He suggested, um, that we buy them outright.
Okay.
And.
How are they maintained if we buy them outright?
There's a contract, a service contract.
Okay.
Right? Is there anything I, I missed? Josh, Josh is on here, I think.
Um,
Well.
Well, it, uh, the, the village, um, thi- this, uh, addition of, of, um, since I was working on this before, um, it was brought to my attention that there's this Central Hudson, uh, subsidy available as well. And as a result of the Central Hudson subsidy, the cost to the village is dramatically decreased. Uh, the Athens Community Foundation grant of $10,000 was going to be paid for, was going to pay for the electrical hookup part of the, um, charging state, the dual port charging station. But the Central Hudson grant will pay for 90% of that. So, um, of the 10,000 or so dollars that the village got from Athens Community Foundation for electrical hookup, now only a thousand will be needed for the electrical, uh, uh, hookup, uh, because the other 9,000 will be used, uh, be paid by Central Hudson. So the village can go back to Athens Community Foundation and say, we'd like to, um, uh, use the additional money that you gave us instead of the electrical hookup. We'd like to use it to buy a second dual port charging station. So instead of two charging stations, there would be four. And, uh, under the old plan, before there was the Central Hudson, um, rebate available, uh, the village, the net cost to the village over five years was gonna be a total of 500 to $1,000 spread over five years. Now, because of the Central Hudson rebate, if the Athens Community Foundation agrees to redirect the money, um, and if the village, um, decides to charge a dollar 50 an hour to, um, people to use these charging stations, which is a reasonable charge. And with very conservative forecasts for, um, revenues, uh, this project will break even and pay for itself in less than two years. So not only will there not be even a modest net cost over five years to the village, but, uh, it will begin to provide revenue to the village, uh, in a little under two years.
So the one assumption that I heard, maybe it's, uh, is that, so Central Hudson pays the subsidy to do the hookup on the one that we purchased. Do we know that they will do that for a second one as well?
Yes. In fact, the subsidy I think will be greater for two than for one. This is what Ron Sem told us. That they are looking for the bigger bang for their buck. And so they see, uh, two dual port stations being more worthwhile to them than a single dual port station.
Okay. What's the recommendation of the board on placement? I know, uh, Lon from the Stewart House had requested one, uh, you know, requested that we look into a second because he wanted to see one down by the waterfront near the park. Uh, so I wanted to throw that out to the board and get your opinions on that.
I thought Lon just wanted information on how to get one because he wanted to acquire one.
No, he, he was asking, I talked to him.
He asked us to put one there.
The, keep, keeping, that, that, if the board, if the village decides to put one up at the municipal parking lot and one down near Stewart House, or two at the municipal parking lot and one down near Stewart House, that changes everything and all of the math that, uh, I, that I've just explained to you may not apply because there is, it does cost about $10,000 to, um.
Okay. That's, that's what I needed to know. So the, the, the planning assumption that we're making is all four are directly adjacent to one another.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm looking at the scope of work and all this, and it seems like they would have more to do to put one down by the river. And, you know, where would it be placed? It just seems like it makes more sense to have them in the municipal lot as opposed to right by the water.
And, and you'd have to.
Two-block walk. I'm not that worried about it. I just wanted to address it. Okay.
I think it should stay in the municipal parking lot.
Okay. So what do we need? Do we need, so before we do anything, we need to get approval from, uh, the, the Athens, uh, Grant Committee.
It seems that way.
Right. I can take care of that.
Okay. Once we get that approval, then we come back and we find the $1,000 and make a resolution to approve the $1,000 for the additional spend to get the second. First, we need to get the approval from the community grant, uh, to allow us to do that.
There, there may be, uh, more upfront money than just the $1,000. Um, Ron said that I think the Central Hudson grant, no upfront money has to be paid. But for the NYSERDA grant of $8,000, I believe the village has to upfront that and then.
Get reimbursed.
I've got, I have a, um, an estimate. Is this still, this still holds, right? That you sent, Gail sent. Um, it shows all the, uh, it shows all the costs and then what would, what the grants, uh, the, the rebates would cover. Yeah.
Right. It's just that the NYSERDA rebate, we, we put the money out and then get reimbursed like a lot of other.
That makes sense. Yeah.
But bot- bottom line is with the current scenario that, uh, Ron sent to Gail and me a couple of days ago, and that I believe Gail has sent to the board. Ultimately, even if the village has to upfront a thousand or 8,000 or whatever, with very conservative use estimates, it's anticipated that ultimately all expenditures will be reimbursed either through, uh, uh, re- rebates from NYSERDA or revenues from the, uh, electric vehicle charging stations themselves within the first two years. And after that, all the revenues will just be profits.
It looks good. Think the community grant found, uh, foundation will be okay with changing the usage of that money?
I think they will. As long, it's still going to the, um, electric charging.
Yeah.
And it's doubling.
Benefit to Athens remains, yeah, the same.
Yeah. So, all right.
But we have to go through the, we have to go through the motions.
Yeah.
You get the approval.
All right. Sounds good to me.
Good.
So should we, uh, we'll do that and then maybe the next time we can decide if we wanna rent or buy. Um, and then when the weather gets better and they can dig, we could go forward anytime.
Perfect. So next meeting, assuming we get approval from the community grant, next meeting, we'll make a decision on rent or buy and appropriate the funds as necessary to, to complete it.
Okay.
Can I just say?
For the next meeting.
Couple more, couple more things just to mull over. Um, the, as I said, uh, Ron and Gail mentioned this too, rented buying because the life, it's anticipated that the life of these stations is significantly longer than five years, which is kind of the lease term. So, um, at the end of five years, y- y- you would be paying more to continue to rent for something that you could own at that point and be collecting the revenues from. So that's the first thing. And then the second is, um, if it's, it's smart to make that decision at the next meeting if you can, uh, because, uh, it, the work, even though the work can't start physically until the ground is, uh, less frozen, um, there is going to be a lag time, uh, for applying and getting approval for the various rebates from NYSERDA and Central Hudson. And, uh, Ron will help the village, uh, with the Central Hudson one. He's allowed to. But the village will have to do the modest administrative work related to the NYSERDA grant. Um, the vendor is not permitted to do that.
Good. All right. So we'll close off all those loose ends at the next meeting then.
Uh, I've got one question.
Go ahead, Ricky.
Uh, how many electric cars is there around here that we need all this? Can anybody answer me that?
There are, there are a handful in the village.
There is.
The real, yeah, there's a couple. Uh, the real benefit of it is that you get put into the mapping of everyone driving an electric car. So if you drive a Tesla or any of these other electric cars, when you program in a route to travel, it tells you you can go this far and you need to stop and charge. So it puts us on that map for people to stop and go to crossroads or go to the Stewart House when they run in, when they need to charge. So that's a real benefit of it is bringing people in to spend money in the village.
And how do you figure out how to charge the people far as electric for their vehicle?
I believe it's done automatically, just like you'd go to a pump at a gas station.
Credit card, I think, right? I think it's.
Is that what it is?
Yeah.
And I believe, I believe that there are also apps that people can have on their phone. Uh, and they can connect to the, there's, there's, um, fairly.
Venmo?
That's, you're right. Probably a Tesla. As soon as you plug in, it automatically gives it your, uh, credit card information and stuff.
There's.
I don't know specifically, yeah.
There's fairly sophisticated cloud software that comes with this, um, is included in these cost estimates, which will give the village a regular report of, uh, usage and revenues and so forth.
I think there'll be more and more electric cars as we go forward into the future anyway. You know, right now it's like they're super expensive, but I think, I mean, if I could afford one, I would get one. So, you know, as the price comes down.
It was on the news the other day. GM is going totally electric by, I think, 2035.
Yeah, I saw that.
Volkswagen's much more aggressive than that. They were in the 2020s somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, answer my question.
Thanks, Ricky. Uh, Tal, did you get a look at the cultural center lease revisions? I'm looking at them now here.
Were they sent over to me? I'm not sure I did.
Yes, I think I, I included you.
Oh, okay.
Take a look at those, Tal. If, if we can just accept it without a resolution, then I'll do that. If we need to come back and pass a resolution to accept the changes, then we'll do that at the next meeting. I just wanna make sure you've looked it over.
Okay. I'll do it right now.
Go. Um, okay, heat in the clerk's office. This is fairly extensive. I will try to summarize. Hopefully everyone's read the email. Uh, the bottom line is the radiator is probably not the best option attempting to repair. The, I believe the word he uses is ancient radiator system is probably not our best option. Um, Jason felt that the best option, for those who don't recall, we said at the last meeting, we were gonna ask our village engineer because the, uh, the service company wasn't really willing to look at the steam boiler, which Jason talks about a little bit in his email. So we asked Jason to take a look at it. His recommendation is that we abandon the radiators in, in place uh, and install wall-mounted heat pump mini splits. Um, probably two interior units. We could get some that didn't go through the wall, therefore didn't change the external appearance of the building. Um, it would do both heating and air. Uh, the downside, if it is a downside, is it would take us off of the heating and air system for the rest of the building, put us on an independent system. Theoretically, if we got one a little built bigger and we could talk to the town about this, it could do some other spaces in the building. Uh, but what we're talking about is, is just the village offices. Uh, but what we're talking about is, is just the village offices. He does also bring up that we want to have, uh, we do want to bring our service people in to look at that boiler. Uh, Dawn, which you guys can do, just get the service folks in there to take a look at that. He felt that the water level jumping around like it was is not good and means a dirty boiler and we need to get that cleaned and fixed. That's kind of secondary to, or it's really primary. We need to get that looked at because he felt that that was a potential safety hazard. That said, my recommendation is that we go out for bid um, for the um the heat pump that he talks about. He also talks about installing ceiling fans, which is something we can do uh without having to go out to bid and do all that kind of stuff. So uh my recommendation would be that we go out to bid uh for the interior wall units, mini splits that Jason recommends. Any other thoughts or questions on that? I, I trust you guys have all read the email as well. His uh, his guess and, and I, I had to force him to give me a guess, so this is a non-binding guess. Is it somewhere in the six thousand dollar range? To set this up for heating and air, which doesn't seem too unreasonable, but we'd need to get bids.
I don't see an email about that. When did that come?
I will send it out to everybody. I apologize. I saw a big, long list at the top, but it's it's engineering, it's the village, it's not you guys. I will get it sent out to all of you today, tonight.
Well, thank you.
Sorry about that. Um, with that said, I'll send it out to everybody to read. Would you guys be okay with going out to bid? It doesn't bind us to actually purchasing anything, but it does get the process moving. And I'll let you guys read through exactly what he said.
I'm okay with going out to bid.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good. So MJ, we can talk about, sorry, Dawn, we can talk about getting a bid right, written up for that. I think uh Jason can help us. He gives us a lot of the details in the email.
Okay.
Okay. Started on that. Okay, I apologize, guys. I'll get that sent out to you as soon as we wrap up tonight.
The, the lease is fine. There's just one comment that I'm not sure who reviewed this, I'm on behalf of the Cultural Center, but there was a question about um utilities and um whether the village would throw, kick in twenty four hundred. It's on page two.
Yeah, I see it.
Actually, that's been the standard rate of reimbursement uh for the past number of years. So we were just hoping to put it in.
Why did we take that? Did we actually take something out of the?
No.
Yeah, I don't think it was ever in there. They're just asking that we memorialize it here at this point.
And that's traditionally been in the budget, do you know, Dawn?
I think I saw it in.
Uh, they, I believe so. I don't know how much. They do bring in some utility bills and some of them are covered.
Well, rather than go through this, my inclination would be to stick with keeping it in the budget and not, you know, not change the lease based on it. Cause that's, that to me seems a fairly substantial change to an agreed lease, but you know, it's not to say we won't keep it in the budget.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah, I understand that.
Anything else in there, Tal?
No, everything else seems very fine, yep.
Do we need to, do we need a resolution to accept other, the other, the other changes other than the?
Yes.
Okay. So the rest looked to me mostly like uh wording changes for the most part.
Yeah, it was all semantics and you know, the one, the one question about needing legal review. If there was eminent domain, that, that's not gonna happen. I'm not concerned about that at all.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the proposed changes with the exception of the twenty five hundred dollar yearly offset utilities?
I'll offer that.
Gail?
I'll second.
Amy, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carries. Thank you.
Mayor, I got one question. How long is this lease good for?
Ten years.
About this last time, I believe it's the five year with five options, right?
No, this is, this is just straight up ten with another, with two fives.
Okay, thank you. Alright. Old business, fire protection contract. I have been speaking to Rob about it. Um. You know, I think we've got agreement on the fire protection contract. It's the lease that I need to do some work and I've been remiss and haven't done it. He told me he needs a lawyer before he can review any of the changes I send to him anyway. So honestly, I put it on a back burner, but I will get that done before the next meeting and send something to him. Um, Franklin Street One Way. Gail, do you know if we've got the speed detector down there?
Um, it hasn't been put up yet because of weather.
Okay.
Because of the weather, he hasn't put it up.
Alright, is it, is that something we can do relatively soon? I I'd like to get some data so we can come back to this conversation.
Okay, I can check with, with Roger.
Okay, Roger actually was on. I don't know if he still is.
No, he, he uh, he had some technical, he was just emailing me. He had technical uh issues with his mute because he calls in from the phone. And I, I mute everyone upon entry, so there's not like a lot of noise on the call. And uh, so we're gonna, we'll have that fixed next time. I don't know how, I don't, I've never done it from the phone, so I don't really know what to tell him to do to unmute. Maybe Dawn can tell him at some point. Or I'll just.
Star six, I think.
Okay. Or next time I'll just leave it off and ask politely that everyone mute when they're not speaking.
Then I have a quick question if I might, um, on the North Franklin thing. This has really gone on for I think quite a long time now. Um, and I have one question. It was worded in the agenda that this was about. All it said was North Franklin One Way. The last meeting were of any substance. It was either suggested that we reduce speed or we have parking on one side. So this, this other aspect of one way was not something that was, was fleshed out in that meeting.
Right, that's incorrect on the agenda. We're not.
Okay, so we, because it's already complicated enough over here without.
Nope, one way. That is a mistake on the agenda. We'll get that corrected in the minutes.
Great. I'm glad it's a mistake. Thank you.
I missed, I missed that.
Is uh, is Tal still on?
Yes.
Tal, I got a question for you.
Sure.
Now, we got an issue down on North Franklin. And God forbid if a fire truck couldn't get through or an ambulance couldn't get through. And we had a chance to fix this and we didn't. Is the village liable?
No, um, because I mean, the roads are there for public thoroughfare. And um if we try and change things or whatever, no, that, that's certainly not a, a liability standpoint for the village in my mind.
Cause I was worried if a fire truck couldn't get through or an ambulance couldn't get through down there and something happened to somebody and we had a chance to fix it and we didn't, are we liable?
Again, I, I think not because those are, I mean, i- it's, it's a public thoroughfare. So it's gotta be, it's gotta remain open in the way that it is open. Um, unless we do a local law, um. No, I, I, I just don't see it.
I just want to make sure the village ain't liable, that's all.
Yeah, the way, where we had left it was we were gonna get some of these speed studies done and then come back to the subject, which we will do. Which is why I want to see the, the cameras up as soon as we can get them so we can come back to this.
You know, Mayor, the easiest thing to do that is make one side parking on the east side.
That's what we.
That is the easiest.
Yep, we just, we had a lot of comments in the public hearing. We committed to doing a speed study and uh, so I want to get that done. Okay. Go around the room. Amy?
Um, I think I talked about most of my things this, oh, there's um there's a property on Water Street and Third that hasn't shoveled or had the snow removed at all the entire winter. Um. And actually across the street is only done up to their own driveway and not. So I know that in the in the code, it says it will remove the snow and then add it on to the tax roll. I don't want to add a bunch of work on to what the DPW has to do. But it's just been like that the entire, that you just can't pass the street. You can't walk down the street at all there. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up. I mean, most people have been really good this year, I think. But there's just a couple of properties around that want, that just, I, it does, nobody in the, in the house. They must go away for the winter or something. I think it's an area.
Neither side of the street's cleared down there, is there? There's new residents in the Livingston mansion.
The court, well, they cleared like the front um up to where the driveway is that, that exits on Third Street and, and then up to the corner, it's still snowed in. So you have to walk in the street until you get to Lindsay and, and Dana's house. Um, so I mean I just wanted to point it out. I don't want you guys to have to like do a bunch of snow removal, but it's not been like one time. It's, it's the entire winter that they haven't done it. So anyway, that's all I had. I talked about my other stuff already. I had some questions on the lease that we figured out in the signposts.
Anthony, any thoughts? I don't know how
I think.
That is where we've got places that aren't done.
Um, maybe we could just send them a, like, send the owners of the properties a letter to just be like, you have to arrange for this. I know there's no fine for it in place right now, but.
If it's the house I think you're talking about, she's not there all winter. That's.
I know.
Like an Airbnb. She's there in the, in the summertime mostly. And nobody's there over the winter.
Oh. Okay, well, we just got an offer from the neighbor to speak to them in the chat, so.
You tell me what you want me to do. If you want to snow blow, we'll go down with Larry's snow blower and we'll snow blow it. You just tell me what you want us to do.
You, you do my house and I'll do Marge's.
Lindsay said he would talk to Marge.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Marge and, and the new folks. I mean, they just closed a couple of weeks ago and just moved in, you know. A little more than a week ago. I'll, I'll say something to them.
Thank you, Lindsay. It's always nice if you, like a neighbor can say welcome and hey, by the way. And then if they don't do it, let me know. Well, I'll know. I walk by there every day.
You, you've got a full plate right now, Anthony. I'd be inclined, I, I, I don't know how many more around the village there are that aren't being done. Uh, I know there are a few here and there.
Yeah.
But I don't know that I want to make that your problem right now with everything you got on the plate.
That's what I thought. Like, we just send them a letter or somebody.
That was, that was not that long. I mean, it's not gonna take a whole lot of time to do it. It's up to you guys, whatever.
What do you think, Stefan?
I'm, I'm fine with doing it if you guys have the time to do it and then we'll get it onto their bills. It's up to you. Uh, it, it's up to you. I'm fine with doing it if you're, if you've got the time.
Yeah.
I want to be very cognizant of your time because we gotta get moved into that building and out of the old one.
Okay, and while we're on a snow thing, is there any way we can get the, the police officers to enforce this? We talked about it the last time about people blowing snow in the road. That little incident that happened in Brick Row. That was one of the reasons why it happened. I got a phone call that the guy up there was blowing the snow in the road. And when I went up there, he was blowing it from, there's, the woods are on the left-hand side. And he was blowing from the left-hand side, blew all the snow out in the road. And I, and I went up there and I asked, I said, what are you doing? He says, I'm helping the people out. I said, no, you're not, because when I blow out a stone, they'll put it right back. So then he, he got kind of, you know, a little upset and went down the road with a snow blower. And then I tried to do what I wanted to do and she put her car back there without letting me know.
I remember. Um, I don't know, Gail, I mean, we have to see him doing it is the problem, but let's.
Oh, you can't. If they're, if they're on, there's no missing seeing them do it. They got no problem doing it. They blow it right, as soon as you go by, they blow right on the road.
Yep, I brought that up last week or two.
Message out to people, but.
If, if they even just stop and tell them not to do it, I think they might get the hint not to do it. And I understand somebody had it on Facebook that like down by crossroads. Yeah, you got the building there, you got the road there. But you, all you gotta do is tip the chute down and blow it on the side of the curb. And we combined with the snow blower the next day, they cleaned Second Street and it all gets taken away. There's no reason to blow it all the way out into the middle of the road. Because once it gets hard back, it doesn't come off.
Right. Yep, and when it's this cold, we have black ice problems when we start.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, they could just stop and tell them, you know, it's a law, not to do it.
You got it, Gail? Gail's got it.
Thanks, Gail.
You're muted, Gail. And you're up next, so.
You're welcome, Anthony.
Alright, that's it, Amy?
Yeah, thanks.
Gail, what do you got?
Um, I don't really have anything more. It was just those two things and, but I do um have a question about something else. Um. What do we do about the street festival this year? Should I start to plan that?
I would. But I'm not the boss.
When do we normally do it? July, June, July?
July.
Yeah.
I would say yes. I would, I would say let's start limited planning.
I don't know if anybody noticed, but the governor today um announced that he's gonna start allowing large venues over ten thousand to allow people to come. There are a whole bunch of limitation rules, but you know, I think if we did something like that where, you know, we figure out we can accommodate a thousand people safely with the social distancing and all that, then you just cap it off at that or you know, whatever. I mean, just, you, you've got to come up with a reasonable set of rules and I think it'll be alright.
I was thinking of just making it smaller. Not having.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the Oktoberfest was the model, right? Cause we had full control over the Oktoberfest. If we could get a model like that, uh, then I think I, I'm relatively certain we'll have the, the laws in place, you know, the, the restrictions lifted enough to be able to do it. A full unregulated street festival in July. I would bet is doubtful. But some kind of a regulated system where we can control the total number of people. Uh, like, like Tal said, they open it up to ten percent for large venues. Um, and it's expected to continue to ramp up. So I, I think we'll be able to do by July. I am, I, I say, I think I'm optimistic uh that we will be able to do some sort of controlled uh environment like that. So I think it's worth starting the planning.
Okay.
Is that it?
Um, yes, that's it.
Ricky?
Uh, everything quiet, bud. I don't have nothing.
Alright, Rob?
Yeah, I got a few things. Um, just uh, in case anybody's not aware, the mayor set a date on February twentieth from eight AM to twelve noon for the, it's on the Saturday for the DPW open house. Um, in case anybody's not aware of that. Um, the auctions on the fire truck, the water rescue truck and the old police car have ended. Uh, the fire truck sold for four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. Um, I believe if I remember correctly, part of the resolution when we authorized them to acquire the other truck and sell this was to put that money from the sale of this back into their, their line item, I believe. That was part of their resolution, if I remember correctly. Um, so I'm, I'm just asking if we could put that four thousand four hundred and fifty dollars back into their budget for the truck line. Reserve.
I think that's what we said, yeah.
Uh, so the total sales was five thousand one hundred and sixty dollars. Um. Um, I was down a new building yesterday, spoke with the installer of the fire alarm system. The fire alarm system is up and running. Um, it is functional, however, it does not dial out until we I, I'm probably gonna have to get with Jason on this one. We have to come up with uh a dialer system and uh figure out who, who we wanted to dial out to. My recommendation would be to have it dial out to the Green County nine one one system. Rather than to any particular person because if we set it up to, for a particular person and God forbid, they're in the hospital or way on vacation or whatever, you just lost a whole lot of time for response to the building. Um, Green County nine one ones there twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, so. Green County 911's there 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So that would be my recommendation for that. Uh, but I, I can get with Jason on that. Um, and we can get a dialer system installed on that alarm system.
Okay, good. It needs to be done before they move in. And what about insurance? For the building? When do we, when do we have it insured so they can move in, all that kind of stuff?
I'll have to get with Mary Jo on that, on the insurance part. And then the last thing, um, I don't, don't, didn't want to really jump around. Probably should have brought it up earlier when we were discussing the leak detection company. We had a little discussion on the last meeting. What, whether bringing in the leak detection company now was an urgent matter or not. Or should we just put an application in for grant funding? And hope to wait to get approved for a grant and I have, I think, uh, I think that was, uh, emailed just a little while ago. I have the readouts for the there's obviously a major problem here with a water leak in the village. And also we, uh, we got the report from Seth on, uh, on, uh, the wastewater treatment plant not in compliance for the month of January. So I would classify as an urgent matter. I talked to Anthony, um, yesterday and, um, he said that 100,000 gallon per day of treated water leaking is the, is real low numbers, probably more closer to 300,000 gallon per day. Amount. Um, so I know firsthand about grants. Um, I worked under a federal grant when I was full-time with the police department years ago. So I'm very well familiar how well grants work. And it's you're not going to win the race if you don't have a horse in it. So I commend the village board for applying for any kind of grant funding. But realistically, it's never guaranteed. It's easy to say, oh, we'll put in for a grant. But there's no guarantee you're gonna get approved for it. I know. We've, we proved the funding. Um, as Anthony stated, they're coming tomorrow to, well, I just want to clarify something that, um, there would, there should have never been an, you know, a question or whatever about whether we should spend money out of the village budget now to fix this now or wait to get approved yes or no for a grant. And only we just wasted a whole lot of treated water. So, um, I thought about this after we got off the meeting last week. I reported, we just sold $11,000 worth of surplus equipment. We don't even have to touch the village budget. We can use, we should be getting that check any day from Auctions International. Use the money out of that to pay for the leak detection company. And Anthony said, it sounds like you'll probably get it wrapped up in a day now. So we went from $3,000 down to $1,500. Use the money out of that. You don't, you have to touch the village budget. I thought about that after we got off the meeting, um, the last time. So I just figured I'd bring it up. Rather than touch Anthony's budget on that, you just use, uh, the funds out of the sales of surplus equipment to pay for that. So we can get it done now instead of, and I, and I would recommend pursuing a grant in the future, you know, not, you know, for future, uh, work and repairs to be done. But you know, as of right now, I would consider this, uh, an urgent matter to get it done now so they can start getting these leaks fixed.
Okay.
Well, I mean, that check, that check came yesterday.
It did, okay.
We passed a resolution to spend up to, I think we said up to $5,000. Where the leak tests out of the, uh, we had a against the water, right, against the waters. So it's all taken care of. You know, I never, I always want to see some debate and discussion and, and in the end, we made the right decision. Uh, and, and the grant to go after the community development block grant to make sure we're doing longer term planning for exactly this type of thing is, is, you know, long-term certainly the right answer, but, but I agree, Rob, it's urgent. And I think we made, ultimately, we made the right decision and.
Yeah. But I, I would still recommend, you know, I'm 200% in support of pursuing grant funding. But you know, I can tell you firsthand, it's never, it's never a guarantee you're gonna get approved for it. You know, it's, it's a lot easier applying for a loan from the bank than, you know, applying for a grant. Um, because like I stated in the last meeting, the competition spheres, there's other people out there looking for the same thing we are and we, you know, but we still have to have a horse in the race to win it too. So so I commend the village board for, uh, you know, pursuing any kind of grants. So.
Good.
That's all I have.
All right. Uh, Tao, I think you covered everything. You have anything else? Dawn?
Nope, I'm good.
Okay. Um, so, uh, Rob covered the open house. We're, we're gonna have an open house February 20th from 8:00 AM to 12:00 AM for village residents who want to come by. I intend to be there, Anthony. Wayne, you guys don't need to be so long as we can get in. Um, you're welcome to be there for the open house, but I plan to cover it. I think, Rob, you were saying you could be there. If any of the other village board members, well, we can only have two there at a time. So we'd have to sort out who's gonna be there.
I'm, uh, I probably won't be able to get there till 8:30 because I'm coming off from my work at eight in the morning. So I should be there.
I'll be there, Mayor.
Okay, you want to cover like 10 to 12, Ricky?
Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay. If we have three of us there at the same time, it's a meeting. We have to announce it, right? That's not, that's not quite true so long as we're not discussing business, but.
Yeah, if you're not conducting business, it's okay.
Because I want to stop by. I was gonna come down.
Anyone is welcome. I just want to make sure we do have coverage, but I will be there. Okay, um, that said, I think we're still planning on being moved out end of the month. Is that right?
That's what, that's what Jason's telling me.
His last email said you guys have everything you need to get moved out and.
We ain't gonna see trucks go down the road fast enough.
All right. So end of the month is still the plan to be moved out. Um, let's see, what else? Uh, COVID vaccinations. I'm still not having much luck with the county. Getting more information. With that said, uh, Congressman Delgado was looking for places to set up vaccination spots. I sent him an email a few days ago. Based on something that he said in the radio, uh, interview. Have not heard back, but looking to see wherever we can influence getting more vaccinations brought directly into the village. Uh, I'm trying to, trying to work it. Um, but right now no one's real forthcoming with it. Um, Dawn, please schedule the public hearing for the Athens Police Review Committee for the what did we say? The March 10th? Village Board Meeting.
Okay.
Uh, that's actually, it'll be like today. It's another uh, department head meeting that will be tacking a public hearing on to the beginning of. But, uh, but the timing makes it such that we don't really have a choice there. Uh, we need to approve the plan. So what we'll be presenting at that meeting, the Community Policing Committee will be presenting a plan for what actions we're taking, uh, what actions we're proposing, sorry. Uh, what the timeline for those actions looks like. And we'll put that out to public commit, public review. We'll have two weeks to make any changes that we get from that public review. And then we'll need to pass the plan at the March 24th meeting to be in compliance with the governor's requirement to pass that plan by April 1st. Though it's not that on April 1st all changes are going to be made. Uh, we'll do a public hearing on what we plan to do and provide a timeline for when that'll be done. And that's what we'll have the public hearing on. And that's what we pass on April 1st. So there's a couple of things that we think we can do relatively quickly. Once we've got that plan passed, there's some things that are going to take a little longer, uh, to complete. We'll put, we'll put that out to everybody. We covered the heating. We covered the open house. Okay, finally. 133 North Washington, the, uh, steel building and the 6.3 acres adjacent to the park where the CND project wanted to be. I've shown that three times. To what I would call varying degrees of interest. I met with Parks and Rec and Senior Hudson again earlier this week. One of the interested parties who's, who seems very interested is Columbia Green Community College. And they don't really know what they want to do with it. They just know they want space on this side of the river and that they need additional space. When I talked to Parks and Rec and Senior Hudson, they'd like to see them do environmental studies over here, which was something that, uh, the, the president of the college had brought up as a possibility, uh, but they brought a couple of possibilities up. The way that both Parks and Rec and Senior Hudson would want to do this, and I don't have numbers yet or anything, I'm just putting it out there, is they would want to subdivide it where Parks and Rec would take ownership of all of the land. But the actual building, they would want to see the village take ownership of and then lease to some kind of a partnership, whether it be with community, with the community college or somebody else who is interested in making investments. With that said, Parks and Rec said that there are significant grants out there that they would help us get to do exactly this kind of thing, both for the purchase of the building. And the grant money is in excess of what they would charge for that building. As well as, uh, for the beautification of the park space that would be associated with it. So we could wind up with a pretty nice place down there. Uh, that would be really spearheaded by Parks and Rec who would help us get grants to do that. They're right now off the top of their head and none of this is finalized yet. They believe that the value of the building that would be conveyed to the village, should we buy it, would be approximately $340,000, which is quite a bargain for an 8,000 square, uh, square foot steel building on the water. And because Senior Hudson is purchasing it in a pre-acquisition, they'd work out, uh, essentially a lease to own with us to try to keep it affordable. So they're really trying to work with us. So again, this is all very preliminary. Uh, I'm just trying to get some numbers, uh, what this is going to look like, what kind of partnerships we can put together. And I will obviously keep the board appraised as we, before any decisions are made or we enter into any kind of a, of a binding contract or agreement. So if you can think again, if you, if you have any other ideas of what can go in there, we had, we looked at an art space. We looked at a recreation space, although they're much more interested in ownership of the building. And we looked at Columbia Green Community College, who this type of an arrangement where the village owned it and leased it to them, uh, is ideal for what they're looking for. So a couple of options out there. I think the, um, I said the, the rec space was more interested in the purchase of the property. Senior Hudson and Parks and Rec isn't really interested in allowing a private entity to purchase it. They would much rather it remain owned by a public entity to safeguard the interests of the adjoining park. They didn't rule it out, but that was their preference. So I, I throw that out there. That's everything I know right now. If you have any more ideas, if you have any questions for me or things you want me to ask them, uh, as I continue to move forward with them, please let me know, uh, and I will continue to update everybody as we go. Questions on that? Concerns? That was all I had.
Stefan?
Yes.
You were gonna say something about the implementation committee?
So we will, um, we, at the next meeting, I intend to, uh, propose names for an implementation committee. Uh, Rob and Amy have been working on coming up with names. Uh, we haven't started reaching out yet. Uh, so we will start reaching out to people, uh, over the course of the next week. And put together that implementation committee, uh, with the hope of approving it at the next meeting. Okay, and we're, we're with that, you know, as we talked about earlier, I've asked Tao to start looking at some of the mixed-use waterfront zoning requirements so we can get out from under the, uh, the moratorium that we have in place as well. I'll, I'll reach out to you, Tao, and we'll talk about it. But, uh, Josh? Okay. That's all I have. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'll offer.
Rob? Uh, Amy, I think, I think one.
It was.
All in favor? Oh, that was Gail? All right, so Rob, Gail, all in favor, ayes, opposed? All right, so carries. Thanks, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.